Good evening and welcome to the Scarborough Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, August 3rd, 2017. May I have the attendance, please? Mrs. Beale.
Here.
Mrs. Lightroom.
Here.
Mrs. Murphy.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Mrs. Shea.
Here.
Mrs. Starr.
Mr. Vashton.
You please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask the question, but I think I know the answer. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, since this is an emergency meeting to workshop our budget situation, that's what we're here for. So that takes us right to 5.1, FY18 School Budget.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our School Board Workshop. I'm super excited about this School Board Workshop and a little nervous because as you can see, it's a different setup and structure than what we typically do. So what I have planned for you this evening is a little bit of a presentation just to remind us of the context and the current situation that we are in with our school budget. We'll, well, let me get to the agenda. We will revisit our mission, as I often like to do with you, and also our vision. Then we'll describe the challenge that we're facing as a community, define the problem, explain the current reality. Then I will define what I hope we gain in terms of outcomes from this School Board Workshop. We'll also get really crystal clear about the purpose of this workshop tonight. And then the School Board with the Leadership Council in attendance are going to actually engage in a bit of a workshop activity. But there will be some parts where, you know, you'll just be listening in, those who are here in the audience while they're working. And then there will be a report out, so you'll get more details about what they're talking about. And that'll make a little more sense as I show you what it's going to look like. So you know I always like to start with our mission and reminding us why we exist. I think this is especially important when we start talking about the budget because sometimes it's easy to forget about our students and the work that we're intended to do here when we start looking at numbers. So I believe that our fundamental purpose, or the fundamental purpose of our schools, is ensuring high levels of learning for each and every student. Therefore, we must be willing to do whatever it takes in order to bring all of our students to their full potential. And then I also want to bring our attention to the district's vision. So here in Scarborough, we have a student-centered vision. And what that means is that we use the student-centered focus to help drive all of the decisions we make in planning instruction and continuous improvement for our schools, even when, also when we are working on our budget. Of course, in order to have that cycle of continuous improvement, we need to have adequate resources. And we make these decisions about what resources, how the resources that are in the budget are used, with the needs and interests of our students at the center of all of our decision-making. And so I just bring this back to the front of our minds as we start to think about how will we be adjusting the school budget this time around. And so I thought it was important for us to really define what is the challenge that we're facing. It's not just about a bottom line here. We're really trying to ensure that we continue the forward momentum toward achieving the strategic teaching and learning goals that we have in the district while also preserving the integrity of the curricular programs, the extracurricular activities, and the supports that we've been building over the last several years in order to ensure that we educate the whole child while also being able to produce a school budget that our voters will be able to support. And I've highlighted some of these words intentionally to bring your eye to them. When we talk about educating the whole child, we're not just talking about their content knowledge or their academic skills and knowledge. We're talking about their life outcomes. And so I believe that educating the whole child includes looking at the social and emotional development of our children, ensuring that they have adequate support during various, the varying developmental stages, but also making sure that they're active participants in extracurricular activities, which can be athletics, it can be clubs, it can be theater, it can be music. It can look a lot of different ways. And I think that as we're developing a budget, it's absolutely critical that we keep that whole child in mind. So in defining the problem, I keep hearing a lot of different diagnosis as to what the problem with the budget actually is. And in my opinion, the problem is a revenue problem. It's not a spending problem. And so what I've chosen to do is show you a close examination of the budget that just failed at our last referendum. And I just want to point out a few things. Yes, there is an increase in spending in our, in our previous budget. It was a 2.88% increase. I think it's an important fact to note that this is under 3%. And in fact, this is actually lower than six other departments in the town. The challenge that we face is that we have a 40.09% decline in non-tax revenue. A lot of this comes from the significant decrease in state subsidy that we received this year. And that has, that decrease in state subsidy is a direct result of the economic health and growth of our community. So the way that the state calculates that is really complex. You've heard me talk about it before. But the key determining factor for us this year that caused that $1.4 million plummet was the fact that our valuation went up $100 million, according to the way that the Department of Ed calculates the valuation of a community. And that's based on, you know, surrounding communities. It's not the same way that, that the assessor is going to determine our evaluation, but that is the formula. And so I think that's an important thing to know, that the healthier our community becomes economically, the less funding we can expect from the state. Because they are perceiving that as Scarborough has a greater ability to support education. And then they funnel the funding, they funnel resources to other communities that don't have that same opportunity. So this budget did create a 6.8 net increase. For fun, I thought I would take a look at what would, what would our budget look like if we had received flat funding from last year from the state? Not a penny more, not a penny less. So of course, we'd have the same change, percent increase in our expenditures. There's that 0%, it brings our overall net increase to a 3.18%. I think that that's a number that we would all agree is pretty spot-on. I think that when we look at this number, that this is evidence that this is a really responsible budget. This is tight budgeting right here. So then last night, we had the first reading of the Town Council, because despite what I think about the budget, our voters said we would like a different budget. And so the Town Council decided that for the third referendum, there needed to be an adjustment to the school budget. And so the reduction that was put in place last night by the Town Council was a $50,000 reduction. And that's really the reason why we're here tonight, is to start to think about where does that $50,000 come from? How do we answer the call from our community while also maintaining that forward momentum, while also keeping our students at the center of our decision-making and ensuring that we're having as minimal impact on our students as possible? And so now when we take that into consideration and we reexamine the problem or redefine the problem, here's that same chart again. And what you'll notice is that that $50,000 changes the increase in expenditures to 2.77. We still have that same revenue problem. That's not going anywhere. And so the overall net increase would be a 6.67%. And so again, for fun, if we were looking at flat funding from the state, if we didn't have that revenue problem, we'd have that same increase in expenditures with zero increase in, in state funding, and that's a 3.06% net increase. And so my, my reason for showing you this and taking the time to go through this imaginary what-if scenario is to really exemplify the fact that this is not a spending problem. We have a revenue challenge here in Scarborough. And if you flip over your agenda, you have a larger, more viewable version of this minus my little arrows. And feel free to jump in at any time. So what does that mean? Where are we now? So as we look at the current reality of where we are, currently, we are $209,000 below level services, and this includes the most recent $50,000 reduction. So prior to that, the second referendum that, that just failed, we were already $159,000 below level services. And so this is an important point to discuss, because there are some new investments in this budget. There are some new ideas, I should say, in this budget. But those new ideas have come from us as a town, as a leadership team, assessing our existing resources and also assessing the work that we know is before us, and really determining what is the best way for us to use those existing resources? How can we get the biggest return on our investment? So although there is some innovation in this budget, it's not because we're increasing the bottom line. We're still operating with a budget or looking to operate with a budget that's below level services. And that's an important point to think of. And so here's a way for me to illustrate that, that for you. If you looked at the first column there, that was the level services that was estimated back in April during our first reading of the school budget. And then by, by July 25th, we had several adjustments that were made to the actual numbers, or based on actual numbers. So if you remember back to my original presentation, we talked about all of these things that are in motion. If you've read the budget book, you know there's a whole section in there that talks about what are the items that are still in motion? These are things, these are adjustments that would have happened anyways. So when we're looking at, you know, where are we in terms of our level services, we're taking those things out, because we were, we were going to adjust them once we had the actual numbers, and we did. So that actually was almost a half a million dollar reduction based on actual numbers. And then now, where we are after, including last night's Town Council amendment, that's where we get to be $209,000 below those level services. And so I love this budget process metaphor. It's way better than the other five I kept trying to use. And this really came from our Assistant Principal, Greg Applestein, at the high school. When we were working together as a leadership team the other day, I was a man, I was equating it to the idea of like pulling a thread from a sweater, like a song was coming into my head and that was distracting me. So he gave me this metaphor. And this really does a nice job of, of reminding us of how delicate this process is. So if you've ever played this game, it's called Kerplunk. I even Googled the commercial from the 90s. It's pretty funny if you, if you have a 30 seconds. But what, basically what you do, and when you're, when you're setting up this game, is you stick all those sticks in and they go in one side and out the other. And you're trying to create a nest that will allow you to put all the marbles in and keep the marbles suspended or supported. And if you've ever played this game, you know that usually when you put the marbles in, a couple fall through. And I think about when we're building the budget, we're trying to create a mission-critical budget that does as much as we possibly can in the most fiscally responsible way. And even with our mission-critical budget, not everything gets to be in the budget. Some things kind of fall through, and we know that they can't, not everything can be a priority every single year. But now, we're at the point where we're starting to pull those sticks out. And so far, we've been pulling sticks out from our proposed budget that you saw back in, back in June, to the tune of about $1.3 million. On your long sheet that you have tonight before you, that shows you all of the refinements and the reductions, all of the sticks that we've pulled out of this, of this metaphor throughout the year. And what we're trying to do tonight is figure out what's the next stick or two or three that we need to pull out without allowing all of the marbles to collapse to the bottom. So there's three, three main outcomes that I have for, for this workshop today. And like I said earlier, this is a little bit of a risk, because this is a new kind of workshop for us to be having. We're actually going to be using some technology and there's going to be some interaction. But what's not new about the work we're going to do tonight is the process. This is the same process that the Leadership Council has been going through since November, if you can believe it. We are constantly looking at what are the existing resources, what are the needs of our students, what are our priorities, what can we do, what do we have to postpone, you know, what absolutely needs to improve? All of these strategic questions are things that we're asking ourselves all the time. So that's not new. But in this workshop, we wanted to bring that work forward to the public in a really transparent way, so that you could kind of get into our heads and see some of our internal strategic thinking around the budget process. We also wanted to use this as an opportunity to reinforce that mission, that, the reason why we exist as a public school, to also reinforce our student-centered vision and remind folks that we're not just talking about numbers, we're talking about the future of our students' future, and also to reinforce that commitment to continuous improvement. And so you're going to get a chance to hear us and see us strategically analyzing the needs of our educational programming as we work together this evening. And then the third outcome that I was hoping that we would achieve tonight is to authentically engage the School Board and the Leadership Council in this workshop, so that we can really assess what are the impacts, what are, what are the potential impacts of any possible reductions? And we started planning this before we knew exactly what would happen at the Town Council, but I still think that, and I think that it's going to really help us make the smartest decisions that we can. The important thing to remember, and you're going to hear me say this several times tonight, is that the purpose of this workshop is to discuss the potential impact of preserving certain programs, certain systems, certain structures, or improving them, or delaying those investments, and while also being able to still improve student learning. What we're not doing tonight is making decisions or making reductions to the budget. I'm going to listen in to all of the conversations, plus take in all of the other information that I receive on a daily basis through one-on-one conference, conversations with leadership members, with School Board members. And then I will bring a recommendation to the School Board at our next School Board meeting. After going back, taking in the information from tonight, I'm going to go back, analyze the budget, and see how do we meet that $50,000 goal in the most, in the smartest way, with the minimal, with the least amount, or the least impact on our students. So I'm going to remind us of that as we go through the workshop, because when we test, we tested this out a little bit, and as we prepared this as a leadership team, what we found was that we all have a lot of things in this budget that we're really passionate about. And there's a lot of things in this budget that each one of us believes is absolutely essential and is absolutely critical in ensuring that we stay true to our mission and that we work closer towards achieving our vision. But the reality is, is that everything isn't, we can't keep everything. We can't do everything. And so we need to be able to have a really transparent, authentic discussion around what are some of the reductions, what are some of the risks of those reductions, and really thinking about what's the ripple effect? Because go back to that metaphor, you know, pulling out one stick doesn't just affect one marble. You know, one stick pulled out of there could cause the whole thing to fall. And so we want to be really, really thoughtful about what we do. And again, not a new process for us. We do this all the time. We've been doing this since November, when we started presenting our proposals in our very first student-centered budget that we worked on. Our, the only thing that's different today is that we're inviting you to engage with us. All right, so here's how it's going to work. You're going to see a template like this, that has some different programmings, some different activities, some different things that already exist within our budget. And it's broken down by three-phase levels. We combined K5, because there are really no new investments in our K5 budgets, but we're still analyzing those pieces of the budget as well. And you'll notice that it's not just about what, the programming that's happening in the schools. We're looking at facilities, we're looking at extracurriculars, and in some cases, we're looking at, at transportation. This was, these templates were developed by the Leadership Council together. We said, what are the things that we need to be looking at and considering? And remember, we're going to be analyzing them in these three ways. What do we need to preserve? What must we absolutely improve with this budget? And what's at risk? And at risk doesn't mean that it's going away. It doesn't mean that it's an automatic reduction. It means it's something that I need to then go back and dig deeper, maybe analyze more data, and think about what's the ripple effect of that decision? And so each group, we're going to have three groups, working together with School Board members and Leadership Council members, will go through this process. Okay? So now I'll tell you the rules. Okay, there's five rules, but I think they're easy to follow, or five steps, I should say, actually. So the first thing that we're going to do is I'm going to actually set a timer, and you're going to work for 20 minutes in your individual groups, K5, middle school, high school. And you're going to consider everything that's on your initial slide. And you're actually going to be looking at your device to do, do this and building, and building your chart electronically, in real time, using Google. So each group's going to be working on their own slides, and they're going to be copying and pasting from the first slide to the next slide. And basically, you're doing a sort, just with technology. And you're sorting each of those programs or systems or structures that are listed on that template into the appropriate category based on the discussion you're having. And so this is a chance to ask questions. This is a chance to, to advocate for something. This is a chance to wonder what the impact would be as you're deciding what must we preserve, what must we improve, and what's at risk? And at risk means that we may be unable to preserve it at this time, because we're, we're at that point. And what I'm going to ask each group to do is that you're going to designate one person from your group, could be a Leadership Council member, could be a School Board member, to be the speaker at the end, and you're going to report out what your group's thinking is. And I'm going to give you a five-minute max on that as well. And then while they're speaking, the other participants are going to have questions and ideas and thoughts that are going to pop into your head, but you're not going to say them, you're just going to jot them down. And I'm going to ask you to jot all your thinking and save that until each group has had a chance to present. Because I think once you hear the whole K-12 story, you might have different ideas or thoughts. And so then at the end, we'll have a little 20-minute max Q and, Q and A, where you can say things like, "Oh Kelly, I noticed that you put, you know, class size on the, on the K5 preserve list. Can you tell me a little bit more about that? What is it, what is it that we're trying to preserve?" Or, you know, another example might be, "Joanne, can you explain to me why you said that that thing, that XYZ thing is at risk? What are you thinking about, and what do you think the impact of that could be?" And so we'll follow this protocol, so that we can be timely, but also so that we'll have a chance for everyone to think and speak about the decisions. Any questions about that? All right, so to get us organized, I, I did actually kind of assign groups, just so it wasn't, it wasn't too chaotic and we could be efficient. So K5's going to be up here, and Monique and Allison are going to join K5, if you want to come on up and find your seats. And the reason why we're sitting up here while folks are moving is so that folks in the audience can actually hear from the mics, because when we've done it other ways, the flat mics that we use project nice on TV, but not for people in the audience. And then middle school is going to be Diane Netto, our new middle school principal, and David Courier, along with Todd Jetson, our Director of Facilities. And you can also sit behind, like my seat's going to be available, and we have an empty seat next to Carrie. So Barb, Barb, you can actually go around and sit next to Carrie there.
She's not sitting there.
And then in the high school group, we're going to have Mike Legage, Sue Catch, Jen Lim, and Kate Bolton is going to join them.
Come on over.
So, as you get in your group, I want you to first assign who's going to be the typist? Who's going to help you keep on track with time? And then someone's going to be the speaker at the end. So I'll give you a minute to decide that. Alright, does everybody know who the speaker is? Who's the speaker going to be? Raise your hand so I know you have one. Donna for high school, Joanne for middle. K-5, who's your speaker going to be? Carrie, alright. Who's going to be the typist for each group? Okay, Diane, Kelly Crosby, Mike Legage. Okay, and who's keeping track of time? Alright, Jody, Todd, and Allison. Perfect. Now, one thing I do want to say before we get started, and I did send an email out to all staff before the start of this meeting, is we are talking really specifically. In order for this to be authentic and meaningful, we have to be really specific. And I want to remind us that when we talk about programs, programs are people. When we talk about systems and structures, that's people too. Seventy-six percent of our budget is made up of personnel. And so, I just want us to be thoughtful about confidentiality and to know that we're not making any decisions tonight. We're just thinking, we're assessing the risks of these decisions and the potential impacts. And please do not use anyone's individual name. Talk about programs, talk about structures and systems as you're discussing. Okay? So, as, as I get us started, I'm just going to kind of zoom out so that your typing is live and I'll be scrolling back and forth as you're copying and pasting into, into your slides for people to see. And it's 7:28, so we're going to go for 20 minutes. I'll bring you back together at 7:49.
Alright, so here's our stuff. Here's our list. Do you have our middle school slide up so you guys can see it? Should we just start with class size and go right through?
So, we're going to lean on you guys a lot for things like class size.
Yeah, what are you writing next? What is that? So, middle school, you move with your plump, kind of, right? It's not, yeah. I would say preserve, because especially, the next group coming through may not be as small. So, now, because you have a variable that's moving through, then, I don't know.
Well, so for me, and, and I do want to say for them, the K-10 classrooms are very small. So when you are putting 21, yeah, classes, when you put 21.
That makes a difference. I mean, research shows that between 20 and 25.
Typically though, there's 17, 18, 19.
Are they 17 to 19?
I do have a class of 20 and a class of 21.
Well, but we're not talking about that.
Yeah, but.
I want that preserved. That was a big blow. My daughter's turned seven crazy, her seventh grade sports went away. And that was, that was bad for the community. It was bad for the kids. I mean, yes, there's still opportunities of club sports, but it's never as easy as having practice right out there.
Fair enough.
Well, no, and their parents are at work. And how are they getting to their club practice? And there's a lot of barriers. I mean, look, if they're using, and there's no Obama in here, there's no, and that was the argument to get one to watch. That's something sixth graders, incoming sixth graders look forward to. Because there's not a lot of opportunity for that.
Treat them out. I said, treat them out.
There aren't that many clubs you can belong to there. So, they know coming to middle school that they'll have a chance to. I want that preserved.
So while they're working, for those of you who are in the audience, you can see, here's some of the things they're thinking about for middle school. Here's some of the things they're talking about regarding high school.
I don't know, I don't know how you would split, I mean. I don't know. It's like judgment or values about like.
So, we have to have some things here. We felt here at the beginning and had to reduce.
I mean, it's, we're not informed, but a lot of parents are so angry.
Completely unable to think.
And when, well, it was budgetary, we had to cut. It was a budget, give me a break.
More information?
And we go back to the essential options.
That was, we've gone through three votes already and everything's starting to cut.
We have all this here. We've cut a lot of professional development.
I feel like that's an extra level.
I've already got it twice.
And not that that work hadn't started already.
Eliminate TDA opportunities, conferences, and then reduce curriculum.
So, half-time with class size to count.
But it's about.
I think preserve, because I think the bottom line is quality, anything.
I mean, I don't know.
That's the bottom line.
It's already been cut about 65,000.
Your need is there for how many kids are.
Just what I can. Right, where it is now. So tell me about building ed tech.
In the learning commons, you've had two ed techs in there running.
Because we don't have.
What do you want to look at now?
But are there also some office?
Well, middle school, we pulled that out in the last. And I think mine is true, but I'm not.
That would be almost not, I mean, almost not.
He originally said, this is what we want for athletic activities. And then when this budget failed, he, but he cut it. To do, and so, it's lower. So we would like to improve that number.
So the librarian now, is how, is that?
That was a very good point, or something like that. But a portion had been covered. And like, and parents can also, like, offer another can, like, fend double or whatever.
But there still are two.
Right. I mean, they do duties. I don't see where any things. They reduce K-5 field trips as well.
That's not a lot for a school that size. I think you have the least amount.
I know.
That's a, I mean, the only. You, you have four.
I guess my only thing though is, if anything, that would be mine before and professional coach.
I don't know what to say right now.
Right, that are learning commons. They need the actual learning.
And when's the last time there was a refresh?
The improvement strategy.
We're going to put anything in? Find out where, just going down.
I think that maybe is at risk. Just because that could be delayed, that's not the direct impact.
And we could still do some of that work. So that, our report from the high school is that that could go in the category.
I'm in the preserve category on this one. But that's like totally opposite because I just feel like.
That's the direct impact on kids.
And we don't have. No.
Because it used to be, you had a new. Here's your materials. And when they reverted back to their old system.
The biggest impact in our system has helped our kids. Collaboration between staff and training.
I think that could go on.
We have not, we have not.
We have one right now.
So you're, you're deciding, I think, it's a lot of money.
Not a lot of money, but a lot of people, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't care who the person is, I just think you need. Somebody with extra hours to put into this kind of effort.
It feels if we probably utilized our.
And then attend meetings.
Working, working, working as a team and, and working.
I could put it in improve, but.
Black, the red, the white, yeah. Yeah, I, that's for me, preserve. Would you agree on that one? Yeah, limit access to buildings. Does that, doesn't that provide revenue in some ways?
You have about six minutes?
I'm just confused about how this is going to work because I know we have a new reading program. Isn't this very in process already? Like, how do we, how do we put breaks on something like that?
Let's preserve. We gave you one. But I am the typer.
Would this fit into improve?
I think, yeah, I think we agree.
Oh, okay, alright, things that need to be improved. Well, I guess if at risk means that discussion is about moving it from three years to four years.
So what about custodial staff members?
Limit access.
I agree, preserve. But like, is there a way to figure out, and you might know? Do we get paid back?
Because I know that none of the buildings are overstaffed. So then, reduction in third-party contractors, like rugs and windows?
So it's some, it's a portion, but not what revenue, what we actually pay the custodian. We pay the custodian three hours, we might get a portion.
What is that? K-5, you pay all the time.
Kind of close.
And custodial is under preserve? I think you got to keep preserve because I don't think it's the.
Well, what does that mean? But.
Oh, we didn't put a place, okay. The thing, like, priority of the building, but I think.
Librarian, library staff. We've been at 28, we're finally.
I'm not ready to reduce that at the moment.
We're taking all of our ideas, our thoughts, our wonders, and our worries in, and then going back to the budget and analyzing it closely to make our determination and recommendation, not a determination, but our recommendation for the school board at their next meeting. So, shall we go in order or go backwards?
Obviously in order.
Okay, order. All right, so starting with our elementary schools. Who's the reporter for elementary? Carrie?
Yes, so, um, K five, we ended up with, in our preserve category, the things that we weren't willing to budge or compromise on are class size, professional development, instructional coaches, the building ed techs, Wentworth School after-school programs, the teacher leader stipended, custodial staff, and school libraries. We didn't end up putting anything into the improve box. And then at risk, meaning things that we think we can have further conversations about, not meaning that we eliminate these things, but that we think they're worth talking about and adjusting possibly, would be field trips, the classroom libraries, and limiting access to buildings outside school hours.
Can I speak to those things at all, Julie, or, or not yet? Yes, you have five minutes, so if anyone else in the team wants to add to what Carrie said, feel free. So for field trips, we are not considering eliminating field trips. What this consideration is, is not adding additional funding to the budget as we originally considered doing, and just having field trips take place as they have for at least the past ten to twelve years, that parents contribute when your student is to go on a field trip. So to go to the Scarborough Marsh, it costs four dollars, I believe, and parents would spend it, send in that four-dollar contribution. And additionally, we fundraise and do our clink bags and host bake sales and all of those things that schools are so good at doing. So I didn't want this to feel like a passion point that we're considering eliminating field trips at K five. That is not the case, we're just, would continue as status quo and have parents contribute. Monique, do you want to speak to classroom libraries?
I certainly can. The classroom libraries are part of the K five literacy initiative, and as a result of the cost of refreshing building, making sure every classroom has a library of books on particular topics, as well as the range of levels of readers necessary for our students. We built a three-year plan to refresh those libraries in order to pace the cost of that refresh. And so we would move from, the thinking in our discussions here was moving from a three-year plan to a four-year plan to refresh those libraries. So it would be a delay of investment. It would have impact in terms of titles students were, are exposed to, but it would just delay that for a bit.
And then what we were comfortable discussing in terms of a potential budget reduction for limiting access to buildings outside of school hours was slightly scaling back the time that the buildings close, so not to say that we're closing the doors at five o'clock and no basketball can take place in the gym, but I think currently it's ten o'clock or ten thirty. So scaling it back a little bit, if that would give us some potential savings in electricity and custodial staff, but not in a way that would drastically and negatively impact student activities and teachers' access to the building.
And I would like the superintendent to consider a revenue stream for the use of those, our facilities, other than for schoolchildren.
Okay, any other K five thoughts? All right, thank you for that work. We had, sorry, Julie, we had a lot of thoughts about why to preserve the things on the list, but I think that it would go over the five minutes, but we're happy to take questions at the end. Well, folks who are listening, if you have a question, be sure that you're jotting it down, and then perhaps, Cal, I think you might get some of those questions from other colleagues in school.
We're hard to know, we're gang fighting.
All right, middle school. Again, I'm just reminding you of the purpose of this workshop. We are not making decisions, we are not making reductions at this moment. We're just discussing the potential impacts of either preserving them, investing in things, or delaying investments. So here are some of the things that the middle school group was considering. Speaker?
Yes, okay. So we talked about class size, and in the discussion of class size, the middle school has already aligned to a class size and readjusted to keep its students centered, and so they've done some of that work already. After-school activities, we talked about preserving that because based on the ripple effect of the elimination of seventh-grade sports before, this is, and plus, we also feel that this is so important to the whole child. Professional development, keep the current level because there have been several cuts that have been made, because as Julie said, since November, we've been re, discussing this, looking at it, refining it, talking about it, but right now we feel that the current level is what we need to keep in place. And also, the quality of the teacher makes a difference with what students learn. The instructional coaches, we talked about the big impact on the quality of instruction, that it is, we felt adamant that they would be preserved to help with that. Also, in the preserve, we talked teacher leader to support the curriculum towards PBE that is coming up in the way the middle school is structured. We also talked about custodial staff, in order to keep a building that size and that age current and clean and healthy for kids. Building ed techs was another preserve because of the limited number, there are four building ed techs at the middle school for the, over the seven hundred kids, and we felt that that was a very limited amount. As you can see, we have none in the improve category, but at risk, we talked about school libraries. Again, can those be delayed and put on a longer cycle? We talked about limited access to the building outside of school hours, and at, we also came out, talked about, because of the, if we were to limit that, or do we, can we receive revenue from the Scarborough groups that use the facilities? Because right now, some of those groups pay, but we don't receive any of the revenue for our after-school access. And, um, the third-party contractors, looking at to reduce that.
But just to elaborate on some of those, we were talking about limiting access to buildings after school hours. We're even, you know, the same thing, closing it a little bit, could shave some time on electricity and the amount of time staff has to be there. But really, we don't get revenue for eighty, eighty-five, ninety percent of the building's use after school hours, because even though participants are charged a fee to belong to those groups or to participate in those activities, it's all kept in that revenue stream and not cycled back to the school, who is paying for the electricity and the custodial staff and supervision, that, we're, we're not seeing any revenue from that. So besides property taxes and state funding, our buildings would be a source of revenue, but if they're ninety percent of the time monopolized by groups that we're not seeing revenue from, it handcuffs us. And the third-party contractors, you want to talk a little bit about that?
For example, we picked up the example of painters. We paint various portions of the building throughout the year. Some of that could be postponed, and we could attempt to do it in more of a smaller project type of approach with our internal staff. I think it's important also to note, though, that we have six school buildings plus the bus building, and we have four maintenance guys. So it would be a limited thing, but I was just thinking about an overall number, but I know we're supposed to talk about that. So I won't bring it up.
All right, anything else to add to your... Okay, so everyone else, if you have a question or a thought or a wonder, just jot that down. And while you're jotting, I'm just going to remind us once again what the purpose of this workshop is. You're doing a great job sticking to the rules, so I'm not going to read it again, but just for our viewers at home, this is a workshop to just be thinking and discussing and analyzing and assessing the impacts. We're not deciding anything just yet. So the high school had several areas that they were considering, and the speaker is...
Donna.
Donna, okay.
So under the preserve category, we're talking about not touching class sizes. The ripple effect here is enormous, because class sizes have already been fixed, our students have already chosen the courses, and when you touch one class and try to redistribute it to other classes, you're setting off a domino effect. The halftime student assistant counselor here, we're asking to preserve because we really felt that with the opioid crisis in particular, right now, the council that we have halftime is dealing with immediate crisis issues on a daily basis. There's no preventive work being done with students in classrooms. So we really felt that we hate to see that one go, given the amount of opioid issues there are going on in our state. The point four athletic administrator here is something that once again is being reduced slightly again, but we didn't want to lose this because this comes up year after year after year, and it never gets funded. It's always cut, cut, and cut. So we hate to see that go, particularly with the medical issues that have come up, with the amount of research on concussions and the need for that additional support person there to stay on top of those concussion issues. That's critical. Reducing the custodial staff, we kind of have, we want to leave it to Todd's discretion. We don't want to lose it, but we feel that, you know, we don't want to lose that staff at all, because it, it feels like the schools already are funded with a low enough custodial staff. We, we already need so much in that area that to lose that again would not be good. Limit access to buildings outside school hours, we were worried about that one, because we didn't know about, you know, whether we do get any funding or not from, from that. We, in this group, we felt there was some funding coming out of that, but now we're hearing from your groups, there isn't. So I'm not sure where that lies, but if there's opportunity to make money on that, then my gosh, why aren't we doing that? The librarian, again, this is a position that over and over again has come back on the table for as long as I've been here, the five years, and every time, it gets something that gets cut again. And so we never get there, and when you look at other towns around us, they all have, you know, master's degree librarians covering their schools. This is a no-brainer here. We, we should have had this one long ago. Thank you for updating.
I was ordered to refresh.
Yes, thank you. The department heads, there's a huge amount of work that's being done at the high school right now in a variety of ways, but to lose the stipends to the department heads is to say, okay, well, you know, the end of the day is here, but we're not paying you for anymore. But oh, by the way, you do have to do another five hours a day working on proficiency-based education and NEASC work, and so we're not going to pay you five. I mean, department heads lead the work of their departments, so they need to get something in, in return for that, in terms of money. To improve, we put in the after-school activities. We hate to see that lost. That's still a very important one for us, but, you know, we're kind of in the middle on that one. The halftime assistant counselor, again, that goes back to the opioid issues as well. And then the at risk, we had replace the textbooks. We were hoping that those math textbooks and our hope was that by using the electronic pieces of that material, that we could sustain a loss there over the course of one more year. The construction projects were a storage issue, building these storages underneath. Apparently, right now, the, the storage issue is a big one, because we have storage scattered all over the place, and this was going to allow us to build some construction, to do some construction underneath staircases and places like that where you could store things, but we could put that one off for a year. The improvement strategist, the high school principal is, is saying that he could do without that position, that we could rely on staff members to carry the work further, that they're the ones that are going to have to produce the work and do the work in the end. So apparently, the, the high school principal feels that's one that could go. The reduction in third-party contracts, and again, this is a facilities issue that is, is that where Todd kind of contracts out for people, maybe a group to do some painting or whatever to help out. And we, we felt strongly that we didn't want to take away Todd's right to carry on and to use it if he feels he has to use it, but use his employees in the meantime, if he can use his employees, but recognizing that if, if he used those, Todd, to do the paintings, they're missing out on doing something else. So I mean, there's, there's the reason for the third party, but we want you to have the, the ability to do that either way, so that's where we're at.
Okay, any other thoughts from the high school group that you'd like to add?
I think what I'll share is that those are italicized, because we didn't really have consensus on those in our group. And we did have the point five FTE student assistance council in both places. The reason for that is, not, not only did we feel that that position should...
But to lose the stipends to the department heads is to say, okay, well, you know, the end of the day is here, but we're not paying you for anymore. But oh, by the way, you do have to do another five hours a day working on proficiency-based education and NEASC work, and so we're not going to pay you five. I mean, department heads lead the work of their departments. So they need to get something in return for that in terms of money. To improve, we put in the after-school activities. We hate to see that lost. That's still a very important one for us, but, you know, we're kind of in the middle on that one. The halftime assistant counselor, again, that goes back to the opioid issues as well. And then the at-risk, we had replace the textbooks. We're hoping that those are math textbooks and our hope was that by using the electronic pieces of that material, that we could sustain a loss there over the course of one more year. The construction projects were a storage issue, building these storages underneath. Apparently, right now, the storage issue is a big one because we have storage scattered all over the place. And this was going to allow us to build some construction, to do some construction underneath staircases and places like that where you could store things. But we could put that one off for a year. The improvement strategist, the high school principal is saying that he could do without that position, that we could rely on staff members to carry the work further, that they're the ones that are going to have to produce the work and do the work in the end. So apparently, the high school principal feels that's one that could go. The reduction in third-party contracts, and again, this is a facilities issue that is that where Todd kind of contracts out for maybe a group to do some painting or whatever to help out. And we felt strongly that we didn't want to take away Todd's right to carry on and to use it if he feels he has to use it, but use his employees in the meantime, if he can use his employees, recognizing that if he used those, Todd, to do the paintings, they're missing out on doing something else. So, I mean, there's the reason for the third party, but we want you to have the ability to do that either way. So that's where we're at.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the high school group that you'd like to add?
I think what I'll share is that those are italicized because we didn't really have consensus on those in our group. And we did have the .5 FTE student assistance counselor in both places. The reason for that is not only did we feel that that position should be preserved, but we should really think about adding to that position moving forward. So we initially had it in both places. We certainly don't want to see it go backwards, so we certainly want it to be at least a 1.0, but the preference would be to even possibly see an increase in that.
Right.
I'll fix it.
Okay. And the after-school activities are in improve, are in the improved category because we started this budget process with a certain level of investment in after-school activities that we felt was appropriate. And over the course of the budget cycle, that's been reduced. And so we feel like that needs to be improved.
The one thing I wanted to add was just when we talked about the limiting access to the buildings, the high school building is the building that also runs adult ed in the evening hours. And so because that's another educational opportunity for not only our students, but even more likely the community members, we wanted to preserve that for others as well because ours is the building that houses adult ed.
Donna?
And I hated to see that academy coordinator mentorship position. So, and I'm the only one speaking, you know, in favor of that one. I hate to see that go. I think our business leaders in town have spoken loud and clear that they need our students at their places. And now we finally have a high school schedule that would allow a kid to go out to a business in town for two and a half hours in their day's schedule and get credit for that. So I just, I...
Well, I would add a little glimmer of hope on that front. I was just up in Augusta today and working with a group of folks at the DOE, and we were looking at different grant opportunities that are going to be coming down the pike. And there's a grant application that we're expected to be seeing in mid-August, the Fedis Grant, that may allow us for an opportunity to be thinking about, or thinking in that direction again. And so I talked a little bit afterwards with the commissioner just to get a clear sense and say, is this a place where we could bring back like that IT pathway that we were talking about? Because we do recognize that we need to invest in not only different pathways for our students, but also the workforce and some of the expectations that the workforce has for our students and opportunities. And we want to be able to try to maximize that. So I'm still hopeful, Donna, that there's some other creative funding sources that we can use to get that off the ground and running. Any other high school things you want to add? Todd?
Just two quick points on the third-party contractors. One of the main reasons we use them is that there are four windows of opportunity to do project work in schools, and it's basically on your vacations. So we use third-party contractors because you have to pack a lot of work into a short period of time. The other reason is that a lot of the work we do is required that contractors have licenses, that my maintenance guys do not have electricians, plumbers, or trade-related training like masonry, that my guys just simply do not have.
Good clarification. Todd, could you also clarify? We'll go into the question part, and while we're just looking at high school, the construction projects, the storage piece?
Yes.
Because I know that the high school is not the only one who uses the storage spaces at the high school. The town also uses some of the storage space for like voter booths. And I know...
Yeah, we have multiple storage areas. We have two areas, large areas in the high school that are district-wide storage spaces. So it basically is housing furnishings and equipment for the whole district. And then we have smaller storage closets or areas for athletics. The town, because they use the high school for voting, has an entire full room with all the voting equipment in it. And these storage projects that we were working on, I was working on them with Mike to help with physical education teachers who have equipment that changes or needs to be updated annually, and they have four locations to have quick access to that equipment. So Mike and I went around with the ed teachers and looked at these two areas. We were planning on building them up, but it involves a fair amount of work and expense to get them built. So they're on hold.
Okay.
Right now, they're on hold until further notice.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So any other questions as you tell me what phase level you're thinking about, and I'll bring it up as well? Jackie? Then Joanne? Anyone else going to have a?
With regards to third-party contracts, Allison, do we have any of those now for special ed? I know at one time we did for physical therapy, for example.
We do have third-party contracts since paid out of the local entitlement federal grant, audiologist, things like that.
Thank you.
So that's not in our operating budget?
Correct.
But it's in our Title III, or IDEA.
And are there any other that you can think of other than special education and facilities?
We might use contracted services for a curricular, for some curricular work. I know that with our literacy initiatives, Monique has contracted with some coaches to come in and coach our coaches and coach our teachers. She could speak more to that.
I guess the question is, when we're talking about contracted services, is it covering the gamut of early facilities?
That's a good question.
I think it was brought up under the umbrella of facilities when it was first raised in our early discussions, Jackie. I didn't even think about it for some reason.
No, but I think it's a point that needs to be made.
Yes.
So we can focus in on what the discussion, where the discussion should evolve.
And like all things budget, we analyze those contracted services every year, and they're always on a needs basis.
I'm thinking just for our purposes now.
Okay. Joanne, and then I saw Sue, Jody, Donna.
Okay. I had a question on the high school for the improvement strategist. Would you be looking to stipend instead of having an improvement strategist?
One of the discussions that we had in why it was italicized was, excuse me, the possibility of, you know, maybe it not being full-time, maybe there's another way to do it. But I think Donna could speak to that, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I have to be completely honest with you on this. I was the dissenting person in the group here because I think that the amount of work at the high school that has to be done in order to attempt to graduate students based on proficiency, in addition to the NEASC work that has, that is being done, is the job of another person. That to spread that among teachers is, one, too much to ask of teachers, and, two, just takes too many hours in the day to put together to get there. And, you know, we're talking about our freshmen graduating in a few, four years' time under this new philosophy, this new plan. And so I'm just, I have to be honest that personally, I didn't want to cut at all. I wanted it in the preserve. But, you know, I did hear from the staff that the high school principal is feeling it could be done in another way, so.
And so we thought as a group, instead of either being black or white, full-time or not at all, is there a way to somehow keep that, but it's at risk as a full-time position?
Yeah, the other important thing that I forgot to share with you earlier was that in this biennial budget that was just approved, the grant money that was allocated to Scarborough and other districts for PBE work was removed. And so we were scheduled to receive thirty thousand dollars in additional funds, which was also earmarked for supporting this position. So in essence, that's another reduction. It was a grant, but that was something that we were really depending on as we had received it in years past, and we don't have access to that this year. So that's an important thing.
Which I think is, the ripple effect is huge on that, for me anyways.
Yep. Jackie?
I just have another comment. Was that Sue about the adult ed? Thanks for bringing that up because with the community using that, just alone in the CNA program, over forty people in this community took advantage of the CNA program this year.
And got jobs right away.
And got jobs. They all had jobs.
Wow.
And you get revenue from adult education.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you notice on your handouts, the percent increase is minimal with adult ed because it is a revenue source.
Yeah.
Pretty self-sustaining. Jackie, then Sue?
I'm concerned about the improvement strategist being on the at-risk, not only because I perceive it as an absolute need, but one of the cries that I have been shouting from the rooftops for years is, I think we short-change our students who are not college-bound. And we've been trying for years to work it out so that more students can go to the technical schools. And now we're reducing something that would improve their ability to get a job in the workplace in Scarborough, Maine, that would introduce them to a new avenue other than college perhaps, or even stimulate them to what they might pursue in college, hands-on work experience. I just think we're shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't take advantage of that. But that's just a personal bias.
Can I just ask one clarifying question? Jackie, are you referring to the improvement strategist or the career and academy?
Academy mentor.
So I thought that this improvement strategist was the person who was going to assist with with the, what do I want to say?
With the career development.
Intern development.
Yeah. That was a different position that's already gone.
Yeah, that position was already eliminated from the budget in the first round of reductions.
Well, I missed it and I apologize.
It's okay.
We can still be sad about it.
But I wanted to clarify a little bit. Jackie, still, Volk is still right there, and we're still, we're gung-ho about that as you are. But also, in that reduction, we've still got a space where we're going to make some smaller gains for sure, but we are still going to be working on some of that intern piece. We've got a little time dedicated for that. So know that that will be moving forward as we're currently planning funding right now.
Sue, can you speak a little more specifically about the plan for that?
Well, we've pulled some of that programming back a little bit, but we are keeping someone with some time to be working on the internship piece first semester and running an internship course and opportunities for students that have signed up in the second semester. So even with the reduction, we are still taking some baby steps forward in that arena. And I, we're very proud of that. And I just wanted to make sure people knew that that is something we're going to be doing new and improving on next year.
Thank you. I'm sure you're providing some of that leadership as you have done with the alternative schools. How many students in the alternative program?
Well, because of graduation, I think we're going to start the year with fifteen out of twenty-two slots filled, but we already have students that are looking to visit right away when school starts. We were doing some of those meetings and having discussions with families as school was ending in June, that that might be a good placement in the fall.
Others may not know, because I've been on the board so long, what leadership Sue has provided for that program. And she is certainly a main reason that it has been so successful. And I thank her.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, those positive comments, Jackie. Did you have something else you wanted to say, Sue?
I just wanted, since we were talking about that being cut, I just wanted to make sure everyone really understood that we are going to be moving forward some in that area next year.
Great. And do, is it, how many students do we think will be able to service in that internship program?
I believe maybe there's about thirty students that have signed up for second semester. I think sixteen or eighteen in each of the classes, the two periods in the second semester. I've been looking more at first semester right now, but we do have some good signups to take that course and engage in some of those internships second semester.
Excellent. Then I believe Jody was in queue and Donna after.
I had a question for middle school. You had professional development, I think, at Preserve?
Yeah.
And I would argue that it should be moved to the improved category. I have, Jody, that's what I said, but. I feel like that sort of continually got cut a lot, again, the same with after-school activities. We started at a place that we felt was appropriate with the budget for professional development for our teachers and for our staff. And over the course of the many budget reductions, professional development kept getting hit and hit and hit, and I feel like it took a big hit this budget cycle. So I would argue that it should be moved to the improved category.
That's exactly what I said, too, just because it's had some repeated reductions, even just since April and the first reading. But our general consensus was, we don't have any room to add to any category or to replace any of that, so that's why it's a sad, empty box for us.
Well, I looked at the improved box, because I knew they were probably, most of them would be sad and empty, but I look at the improved box as something that we can...
Strive for.
Strive for and think about and refer back to in November when you all start this again, which is only a sad three months away, start again for the next year. That, to me, that improved box was sort of going to be our guide. That's what I sort of had in mind.
Yeah, and so if middle school agrees with that argument, please do move it over. And the other thing I would add to what you're saying, Jody, because we are already, believe it or not, talking about next year and have been since May, and is to be thinking forward about what does, what does next year's budget look like? What challenges do we already face? And what are some of those things that we've delayed that we know are going to take priority? And so keeping in mind that this year and this budget that we're putting back out to the voters, that we are using two-point-one million dollars in our fund balance to offset the non-tax revenue loss that we are experiencing, that forty-point-zero-nine percent decline I showed you earlier. So that means, starting out from the gate, we already have a two-point-one million dollar hole to dig, plus the two-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars that were already below-level services. And although there's more money going into education in the next part of the biennial budget, I would be very surprised if we break that minimum receiver threshold. I think that's really our current reality, and so long as the Scarborough community continues to thrive and the state continues to assess, you know, our valuation in the way that it did this year and has compared to other towns, I don't foresee a huge increase in our state subsidy. So one of the things we've already started talking about is alternative revenue sources, creative funding sources. I like to call it creative funding. That includes fundraising. It includes the work that Mike does with our boosters generating over a half a million dollars each year. But it also includes like the partnership we have with Saco Bitford with the new debit card. It also includes trying to find some real private-public partners who want to invest in our program so that we can develop some feeder programs that will support the economy and the workforce development and not just altruistic partnerships, like genuine give-to-get partnerships, so that, I think that that's really the future of Scarborough. We have to really be thinking about what are some of those private-public partnerships. And so I just add that so that we're all kind of thinking in the moment, but also forward, because it's really important that every decision we make, we realize, doesn't just impact this budget. It's then, you know, another gap that we may potentially have to fill depending on our assessment of needs in the future. Donna, I think you were next.
So this is a K-5 question around the school library books, and I thought it was classroom libraries. Have I got that wrong?
You're correct.
Were those classroom libraries to purchase leveled materials to meet specific needs of kids? Or are they just groups of, you know, four or five books of the same title that kids could use during, you know, just free reading time or silent reading time for fifteen minutes, twenty minutes a day?
Well, they certainly have that function, but they are leveled titles that will be used for reading instruction as well.
So if there's a refresh, the year that a kindergartner comes in, then we're refreshing K through five, I assume. So that student will never experience another refresh until they're in the fifth grade?
Well, no, not necessarily. This is a refresh that we're taking, we're recommending maybe taking for four years as opposed to three years.
Right.
We're adding to the core classroom libraries. And so we would not necessarily do another refresh in the fifth year, for example. We may have an allot amount of funding that teachers can...
We may have an allot amount of funding that teachers can choose from to add titles to their collections for books that get lost, those sorts of things.
Yeah.
We have never really done an audit of all classrooms to say, what is the core library that a grade-one classroom ought to have? What's the range of instructional titles, instructional reading levels, titles? And what are the topics and the genres, and so that it's a balanced collection? Teachers have, over time, just amassed individual collections. And so while in the budget process, there were funds set aside for, for example, new teachers to start building their classroom libraries, many teachers individually identified titles as a result of the Scholastic Book Fair. So this was a way to take a look at our literacy curriculum, and it was the instructional coaches who worked with the classroom teachers to develop the titles and identify the vendors and do the research on these pieces. What's recommended is 40 titles per student, 40 books per student. And so we have built that for each grade level, including the small classrooms, academic support, special ed classrooms. We've identified core classroom libraries. And then what we've done, because of the cost of that, is we split it up into a three-year plan. So we would just, we would, our hope would be that we would continue to purchase some titles for this coming year, but then we would complete that core classroom purchase in the third year, and then the fourth year would be the selection where teachers could pull topics of interest, topics that better align or deep, more deeply align with their core curriculum.
Because I assume that would be the reading material that's available to the students for the literacy portion?
Yes.
For the reading portion of the literacy?
Yes, for the literacy curriculum. But that doesn't mean that there are empty shelves in classrooms.
Oh, right, right.
Okay.
So you might remember, I remember when I was in school, my reading textbook, my Basil Reader, where there was, every kid got a bound set of the same stories, and whether you could read them or not, those were your stories that you had to read multiple times throughout a week sometimes. What Monique has led our district in doing is really personalizing and individualizing the reading curriculum. So we meet all students where they are, and we want to have high-interest, appropriate leveled text that kids want to tear off the shelves and read. And the younger grades, they're carrying around like 10 books in their little book bags and reading them over and over again. The other thing, too, that Monique has been working with our instructional coaches and our teachers on, is really looking at the title selection, as she said, so we have a balance between fiction and nonfiction, but also making sure that, you know, do we have titles in students' hands that are culturally proficient, that represent a diverse population and have diverse authors and things? So it's a really complex system that they've created and a plan that they've created to fund over multiple years.
I have a clarifying question about, so we talked about field trips for K-5, and it's going to be status quo. Field trips still happen, but in the same way, parents pay. Because May 18th, middle school eliminate funding for field trips, is that the same thing? Field trips will still happen at the middle school?
Correct.
But it will be...
Relying on parents.
So the same?
Right.
So the hope was to try to eliminate some of that in the budget originally, and now we're just having to go back to the way it's always been?
We're looking at field trips as an extension, as a part of the curriculum, and we feel that if we're, if it's our curriculum, we should be funding it. That's the point of public school. But we're just at the point where we are having to rely on our parents for a lot of things that...
Well, it's like sports and boosters, same kind of thing. Like we have the sports.
And technology and, you know, parents. I think one of the things that we're going to really try to do this year is try to capture for you exactly what is the average cost for a student, a K-5 parent who has a student or Wentworth, a parent who has a Wentworth student or a high school student or a middle school student? Because I think the community would be surprised to know how often parents are, you know, reaching in their pockets to support this education.
Can I tell you something that I just figured out today? Before school starts, before I buy a single school supply for a teacher or a classroom, or even for my kids' own pencils and papers, $600 I'm paying for my three kids before school starts. For their laptop and, you know, maintenance plan, for sports, for the required calculators for math, I'm paying $600 before I go to Staples and buy loose-leaf notebook paper.
Jackie, did you want to add to that?
I would like to suggest that we ask our teachers to keep track of what they purchase as well, and turn that into their principal when we start the budget process. Because I think...
Out of pocket.
I think people will, as long as it's not a burden on them, and as long as it's not a burden, an extra burden on the principal, I think that the community needs to know what parents are kicking in for the education of their children, over and above what the state sends and what the taxpayers put in, because I think it's enormous.
Any other questions, ideas, thoughts about our discussion tonight?
Good discussion. What a great group.
We were state champs down here. Jackie, you said you're group rock. We were the state champs over here. You coordinated your outfit. You called ahead and planned your outfit.
So before you pack up all your things, just a couple of culminating thoughts. I might have said this once or twice tonight, but just a reminder again, and this is really, I feel like when we're having these meetings, we're also talking to our community and to our teachers who are watching or accessing this later. No decisions have been made yet. I have to tell you that I'm feeling like this was a successful process. I don't know about you, because there are a lot of things that I wasn't even thinking about initially, and so I really was authentically engaging you in this process so that we can make the very best possible decisions as we meet the new goal of a $50,000 reduction. And I bring you back to our metaphor that we started with. Again, what I will be trying to do over the next two weeks or so is to figure out which one of those sticks I can pull out without our whole entire budget collapsing. And, you know, just in anticipation of some folks who think that $50,000 doesn't really sound like a lot, our total reductions from our proposed budget that we initially presented way back a long time ago in the spring is now currently up to $1,322,593. And so it's not about just this $50,000. It's about all of the other reductions that have happened so far. And so we will meet the challenge. We will present recommendations to the school board, but I hope that this conversation has allowed our community to appreciate the complexity of this decision that we have to make and how all of the work that we do is so very much interconnected. And so thank you all for your engagement. I really appreciate it.
I think that's actually the best illustration of death by a thousand paper cuts, death by a million paper cuts that we are suffering. So that's the end of the meeting. Do I have a motion for adjournment? No moves?
Second grade.
All in favor? Bye. Thank you.